Well, good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, January the 30th, 2023. It is now 3:00 P.M. The work session of the City Council will come to order. We have a few items to discuss today. We have five items. Item one is address display on properties. Item two is proposed dog ordinance changes. Item five, Noah's Ark additional funding request. And item four, Chamber of Commerce additional funding request. And item five, kiosk wrapping discussion. Start with item one, address display on properties. Mr. Rooker, what do you have?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure who's presenting this. You know, Karen?
I do not have that.
I think it's Corin.
Yeah, I'm sure where they're at.
Chrisman, maybe?
Yeah, so we'll, let's move on maybe to the next one and we'll...
We'll move on to the proposed dog ordinance changes?
That's another one too that...
I have, if I could, what is that? Thank you. And Mayor and Council members, we have talked about this briefly before. That is, the dog at large ordinance needs to say that someone in possession of a dog can also be guilty of a dog at-large offense. What is happening right now is if someone has a dog at large and they're contacted by the dog catcher, then they say, "Well, it's not my dog." It's like either I'm dog sitting or it's my son's dog. And really, word is getting out that it's a defense to a dog at large ticket, that you can say that it's somebody else's ticket. So it needs to be that you were either the owner of the dog or you were in possession of the dog. That is the proposed change.
Yeah. I read that and it does make a lot of sense because it's so easy to say it's not my dog.
Exactly.
And hopefully, you know, people will be able to, not only for this change, but just to control dogs more because there are so many dogs that are running around, released.
Right, yeah, that's absolutely right.
I'll give you a good example where I live. I like when I take my dog around the loop. There's two or three dogs that are running loops, you know, and what do you do? By the time you call the, you know...
They're gone.
That's right.
And so, yeah.
Right, and dogs, of course, are not like motor vehicles. I know that's overly profound to me to say, but it's like they don't have, they don't have a VIN number, right? So all you have is like, say, a brown and white, you know, shepherd-like dog. And so, you don't necessarily know if they don't have, you know, tags or anything like that. You don't for sure know who the owner of the animal is. So again, it could be somebody who, you know, does own the dog, but they just say, "Well, it's not my dog. I was taking care of it for somebody else," and we can't cite them.
Okay. Any questions from Council on the matter?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the best way to identify a dog, if they're within the city limits, would be a dog license. Can we find them or require them to license that dog as well?
We do, we do. That also is part of it. But it's very common that if you have a dog that is running at large, that they don't have a license or they don't have, at least not, they're not going to have proof of vaccination, obviously, but they may not be vaccinated as well. So we do have municipal offenses for no license, no vaccination, and we do have those as well. So it's a lot easier if you do have a dog that, you know, has tags and is licensed and we know right away who the owner is. But it's more common that a dog running at large will not have that information.
Would, is there any follow-up after, like, say, the dog, you found the dog? Is there any follow-up to make sure that that owner of that dog gets a license and verifies that the dog is vaccinated? Because that's important, that's, rabies, I think, is the only one that's required. So is there any, how does, how do we handle that, Liz?
Well, if somebody comes in and they have, let's say, a dog at large ticket and they don't have a license and they don't have vaccinations, you know, we don't know what they do. If they provide proof of vaccination, that, that part of the ticket gets dismissed. Or my policy is if the dog is unvaccinated and they will go get a vaccination and a dog license, and I'll dismiss those as well. The overriding governmental interest there, I would say, is to get the dog vaccinated and licensed. So that is what we have. And a number of people will come in and say, "Well, I just gave the dog to Noah's Ark," or, you know, whatever. There are a lot of different ways that can go, but, but we do, we try to make sure that they will have the dog vaccinated and licensed.
So take, I apologize. I don't want to apologize, but, so say somebody comes in and said, "I took my dog to the shelter. I relinquished ownership." Do you follow up or does there any way you require them to show that they're no longer owner of that dog?
No, I would say the answer to your question is, is no. If they give the dog up, I don't really look to see who the owner is anymore. They would still have a dog at large ticket and they may, you know, if they have no license, no vaccination, I would probably go forward with that. But, you know, sometimes if it's also in combination with a vicious dog, let's say the dog bit somebody, and the dog is put down, then I handle it differently. But usually, I would just have them plead a vicious dog and that would be all. But if someone relinquishes a dog, I deal with the ticket, but I don't follow up with what happens to the animal. I don't, and I don't believe Ms. Sandoval does either.
The owner would have to be responsible for it. The medical injuries, bills incurred.
That's correct. We always require restitution if there was a, you know, dog...
Gesure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Tess.
Over here. I do, I follow up. If they relinquish their rights, I do follow up. I make sure that it's an accurate paper or a statement and it's an accurate document. So I do follow up.
And I'm sorry, I didn't know Tess was out there.
I just walked in.
Okay. I would have called her only time ago. Wouldn't everybody much rather hear from Tess than me?
Yes.
That's hysterical.
And any other questions?
The only question that I would have would be with, we need to get some publicity out there and put this in the paper because, you know, people, if we're just talking and people don't know the regulations, and it would be worth an effort to put that out so people understand what's going on.
Good idea.
We have the newspaper there and maybe we could get something written up for it.
Right. Benjamin called me...
Put it out a couple, a couple times, not just once or twice.
Hear that, Benjamin? Just kidding. Benjamin called me this morning and was wondering about this. I think that's a great idea and that I have publicity about this, this change.
And it would be good, I think, somewhere, maybe get it in our social media.
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea. And that, that should also be in our, hopefully in our, I'm not sure how this would be done, is, let's say, a new founding moves into Trinidad and they want to know what the dog ordinance says. Make sure that it's all inclusive in there too. I think that's important.
Here's a whole chapter.
Mayor, I think Councilmember Okul Tree...
Yeah, she did have a question. Erin, you have a question?
I do, and you maybe will be getting to this, but I was confused about what this has to do with dangerous dogs. Because the first part of the ordinance that is in front of us has to do with keeping of a dangerous dog prohibited. And I take it that the second ordinance is just about correcting that it doesn't have to be the owner, it can be the person in possession.
The first part of the ordinance is to increase the fine for dangerous dogs. It's a good question. Should have mentioned that, but that is what we are doing number one.
Okay, and what will the, what will the fine be now?
So it's under the general penalty, so it's no more than three, or no more than 300, no, sorry, excuse me, it's 300 to a max of 2,600.
And what's the, and I assume we have a definition of dangerous dog? I didn't get a chance to look through the code to see what that is.
We do, we do. And yes, that is, that is in the code.
Okay, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I have any questions?
I was just wondering, was there a uptick in dog interactions is why we're here or...
No, no. What precipitated this good question is I was doing a trial on, on a dangerous dog, a dog at large. Yes, I'm 61 and I prosecute dog at large tickets. I'm kidding. And anyway, the judge said, "I am not going to find this individual guilty because, because he said he was not the owner of the dog."
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so that, you know, that person walked on that charge.
The scenario of that, Karen, or the first scenario that she was talking about, whatever homeowner says, "Well, I'm going to license my dog and whatever has to get done." Is that, you follow up on that as well?
I don't think I... Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
Go ahead and fill in what you were talking about, how you determined that, that if someone comes in and says, "Okay, I've got my, that's my dog, but I'm going to license it and do whatever is necessary," so you kind of let them off hook to certain...
Oh, yes, yes.
I just wanted to know if you follow up to make sure that that has been done.
So if there's a vicious, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm screaming at the dog.
Get on up here.
Sorry, sorry. So if there's a vicious dog, what happens is the officer will impound that dog at Noah's Ark. The owner of the dog will come in to see me and write a letter to the judge asking for a hearing for the release of that dog. So we have 10 days to do the hearing. At the hearing, the judge will ask if the dog is licensed, vaccinated, and all that good stuff. If the dog is not, then one of the requirements to get their dog back is to have it licensed and vaccinated, and I get a copy of that.
And that's even if the dog is not a vicious dog, they just pick it up, right? Same thing?
Not necessarily.
How do you handle that?
If the dog is at large and the officer takes the dog to Noah's Ark, he gives him a ticket for dog at large. I don't know that he follows up on the license and vaccination part. If the dog is running on the street and the owner is just like, maybe across the street, he'll go take the dog back to the owner, give the ticket, but also ask for license and vaccination. If they're not, he'll charge him with those two things as well. And then if they provide those, chances are those will get dismissed, those charges.
The other thing to look at here, I guess, and it's not on this particular piece, but do you feel that the charges that we are charging people, are they adequate?
I think so.
I don't know what they are, but I just want to make you feel like they're adequate.
I do, I do. You agree?
I agree. Except for the vicious, and that's why we're here.
Right.
Because we've been, the last few people that have been charged with that, we start at a minimum and the minimum is $30.
I'll have to check with the rules and regulations with the Department of Agriculture because I think once any dog enters the animal shelter, it cannot be released unless they're vaccinated, and rabies and the others. And then what happens is, in order to reclaim that dog, the owner has to pay for those Do you guys know any? That's right.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Ms. Okul Tree, do you have any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, we still don't have anybody here from Code Enforcement on item one, evidently. So let's move on to item three, Noah's Ark additional funding request.
Thank you again for allowing me to come back. That's for you three.
Thank you.
And this is for City Council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come back. I apologize that at the, our initial, we weren't able to provide you the information that would be helpful for our ongoing discussion. And Mr. Lewis, our executive director, is currently out on medical leave. And so that's, that's part of it. But what I wanted to make sure is that you had some specific information so that as we have the conversation, you have that information. So some of the things that our contract as the, as the contractor with the City of Trinidad to provide the services that you're required to have by state law is the things that we have specifically are listed there under item number one. And so that gives you an idea of some of the things that we have. The second item that we wanted to make sure that people were aware, and I need to back up and say, first of all, thank you to those City Council members and to the mayor that were able to arrange your schedule to come out and to do the, you know, the tour of the building because I think that that's been helpful for you to see what we're actually working with. It's a beautiful facility, but we do have some challenges, and I think it helps to actually see what those are. But during the design and the, you know, the building phases of the new shelter building, there were some architectural features that have really caused us some challenges. And so the one thing, the biggest thing, is that the HVAC system, instead of being mounted on the roof of the building, is actually behind, which then took away all of the area for the free play area for the dogs. And it's pretty challenging when even animal control is bringing in a dog into the door. It's a pretty close area. And so that's one of our biggest challenges is the fact that the HVAC system is all right behind the building and takes up what we would call the free play dog area. It also was built without having the proper outdoor shelter area for the dogs. The dogs are inside, but first thing in the morning is they take the dogs out in shifts and they put them in the outdoor kennels while they clean and they get it all sanitized and done. And in the summertime, we also want them to be out there. However, those permanent, all of those permanent cages need to have cover on it for both the shade as well as weather, and they don't. We had gone ahead and Noah's Ark paid to have all of the outdoor shelters put in there, but that's another thing that we haven't had, and that's required by state regulations. And then finally, the building, as it was built, and I don't have that specific information, I was not on the board, but the square footage was dramatically reduced to what had originally been planned. So that's one of the challenges that we have with trying to take care of animals, is we have a much smaller building than we had originally anticipated. With that, and I'm not certain, and we wanted to make sure that everybody was very clear, is that originally, when the discussion was about building the building, Noah's Ark wanted to make certain that the city knew that we had a vested interest in working with the city. And so Noah's Ark went ahead and did a fundraising drive and was able to raise $375,000 that we then gave to the city to help with the building of the building. And that was kind of our buy-in to make sure that it was understood that we have a commitment to take care of this for the city. In addition, since then, we have invested this past year over $70,000 to be able to buy what is necessary to run this shelter correctly. So we, we continue to make a really huge investment into this shelter, which is what are, that's why we're here. The Noah's Ark thrift store that is on Main Street is really one of the major fund, funding revenues that we have for the shelter. Just this past year is they brought in over $117,000 net for the care of the animals. So they really do help us immensely with trying to carry through our mission. This year has been a real challenge because we have seen significant increases in many of our expenses. And so you'll see there that I had gone ahead and listed down exactly what it is. Our veterinarian expenses have increased to biggest, 207%. But as you can see, both the wages, the food for the animals and medical supplies have all also increased. What I have there on the back page then for you is that these are some of the things that we are needing is we would like to have you consider, we know that that wonderful water tower is finally down, and so one of the things is that we would like you to consider possibly using part of that land for the play area for the, for the dogs. That that would be pretty close to the animal shelter, and that may be something that we would like you to consider. We did have a private citizen that has offered to donate $2,000 to help us to put the permanent cover on the outdoor kennels. The quote that we got was going to cost between $4,000 and $5,000 for each section, and we have five sections. So that's also something that, you know, it's kind of a capital improvement, that that's a huge expense that we have going on. We would like to ask if the city has the availability with your grant writers to be able to assist Noah's Ark so that we can start looking for other funding venues with grant writing to be able to do that. That would be very helpful as well. We understand that right now that the city is looking at upgrading your security systems, and I don't know that you are aware, but there is no security system at the shelter at all. And so it would be very helpful, both for the security of the staff, for the animals, and for your building, that we have you look at, at possibly putting in a security system. Last year, the contract that was signed was for $35,000, is what the city had gone ahead and paid towards the assistance running the shelter. We thought it would be helpful for you to have an idea is that it costs us approximately $300 per animal to take care of them. Last year, our survey was 1,250 animals. So that comes to $375,000, and food costs us about $10 a day. So those are some of the challenges that, that we're looking at, and we would request that Council consider possibly having an executive session, that we can go ahead and look at the lease and, you know, be able to discuss these matters and take a look at them for us. Any questions or any...
I'm really sure we need an executive session necessarily. I think it can be done in a session like this.
No, it's a contract though, Mayor. We have, we have a contract.
I mean, that's a permissible reason to have an executive session. And so if you would want one, we could, but I don't know right offhand that there's necessarily a need for an executive session. If you want to talk about doing an executive session, we can. I'm not, I'm not trying to give push...
And I guess it would be the items that we would be discussing if there's...
Right, right.
Sticky items, I can understand.
And there may be things that are better discussed in executive session.
Take a look at those.
I think I'm getting the vibe.
Okay.
Just kidding. So, but we could, we absolutely could.
Well, again, I went out there and don't want to jump ahead of everybody else, but I did go out, I did go out to the tour. And one of the things that was interesting to me is there is, where you have the outside shelters for the dogs, and if you were to turn dogs out in that other area where the HVAC system is, wouldn't be good because a dog could get, and start chewing on some of the components of that, which would destroy it. So, you know, now that the tower is down, do we have any ideas of any future use for that?
Mayor, I've already talked with Dave Bociccia, our Power and Light Director, on that. So he wants just a portion of that property to store some transformers, but we're definitely willing to work with you on providing some space for animals. So we, if you want to have Matt or when he's ready, reach out to me, we can schedule a meeting to talk about that and figure out how we can work out a plan for that.
I think, yeah, I think that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, we're on board with that already.
Against him a little bit, of course, but yeah.
And then the grant writer, Mayor, would be the other one that would, you know, more follow under me. Not a problem. As to leave this time permits, we can definitely avail her, her skills to help with not only finding grants, but maybe help write some applications as well.
Any, any questions from Council?
Not a que... Go ahead.
Well, go.
Um, not a question, but let's take this scenario that we were talking about prior to, the dog that is loose, no license, no vaccinations, come to the shelter. The shelter by law has to vaccinate that animal, notify the owner, okay, your, your animal's been here, you can come and get him, but you owe $200 for vet services. Big portion of the time, that owner will say, "I don't want that dog." And they relinquish ownership of that dog. So now the animal shelter has that dog we have to keep and, I'm sorry, I don't know how many days it is, but the dog has to stay there for X amount of days before it can be transferred or adopted. It has to be spayed and neutered. That's a state of agriculture.
Here's a scenario that just popped into my mind. Let's say somebody does exactly what you're talking about and maybe relinquished that dog.
Right.
But they go out and they find another dog somewhere, and then it gets caught again. What happens in that, I mean, that's another scenario we'll talk about in the first part. I think that would be, so I think that's something that maybe we need to, as a second event, is what I'm talking about. So anyway, but anyway, as far as...
So it's just, I'm giving you that information, so I'm sure you understand the challenges that we have at the... And then one of the other things too is that they have the ability to microchip the animal. And so then if that animal would escape again and they would find it, they can go ahead anyplace in the United States. It's not just at Noah's Ark, but anyplace they can look at the microchip and it has the owner's information.
What is the charge for microchipping?
It's less than $100.
It's around $100, I was going to say, yeah.
Other, other questions on this matter?
Eli, do you know the approximate cost of a, of a permanent cover? Because you'd have to have something that's contoured to where you're going to have it run off.
What they're telling us is that for the sections, they're going to run about $5,000, $4,000 to $5,000 per section, and we have five sections.
Yeah, five sections.
Five sections.
Yeah, because I was out there with Karen and Mr. Lewis, and I was impressed with the facility itself.
That sounds like pretty steep price per section. What, what kind of cover are we talking about?
Well, they're metal cages. And so what it is, is they have to be a certain height, and then they have to be able to withhold a snow load, but they also have to be such that they would protect the animals from the sun or from the, the weather as well. That's what the Department of Agriculture requires. When we first moved out there, we did what we thought might work, and we used some heavy-duty tarp's. The tarp's are being replaced on a weekly basis, yet they just did not hold up. And so, you know, we've tried different things, but there's actually a permanent cover that needs to be attached to those. So though I don't have all the, the specifics on it, Mayor Rico, what I, what I am understanding is it's going to be something that will be permanent, that it would be welded on there, that it would be something, that there would be a permanent cover on that. So if the animal was out there and it was raining or it was snowy, it would be covered. If the, if it was a lot of sunshine, that they would be protected.
How big are, how big are, excuse me, how big are those cages?
Oh.
They look too big.
I, you know, I, to tell you the dimensions, I, I shouldn't know that. I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm going to say they are probably like...
Eight by ten?
No. Maybe, maybe like eight, eight by 10.
I was going to say eight by 10. I think that they are a little bit longer. Yeah.
Good, Eli.
I was just going to ask you, when you're shuffling the dogs in and out, are you in violation because you're bringing them outside and there's not a cover right now?
No, it's a situation is that at this point, like, it's cold out here now.
Well, yeah.
And so they go ahead and they take it out, clean out the kennels, and then get the dogs back in. In the summertime, we like to be able to have the dogs out and to be able to have more outdoor time. The problem is, is that if they don't have that cover and that shade, that it's detrimental to the animals.
Of course, yeah, okay.
And Mayor, if this was something that we move forward with, the city would bid this out and look at state pricing for this and see, you know, that we can get it as low as cost as possible.
Questions, any questions? Any questions? Ms. Okul Tree, you have questions?
I, I think we all are so appreciative of everything that Noah's Ark, the nonprofit, does to help us fulfill what our, our duties are, and I, I think, I hope that we are responsive to the requests that you have. I have always loved that this city makes the humane treatment of animals a priority. Thank you.
You know, my question, going back to the cost, because it's, if it's like, let's say, an eight by 10 cost of, eight by 10 section.
Not the section, each, each kennel.
Each kennel.
Yeah, each kennel. And there are several sections that go together in that, yes.
And you're talking about $4,000 to $5,000 per kennel.
Per section.
Per set.
Per section.
Per...
Per group of kennels.
Per group of 10. Or is that, break it, I'm trying to break...
I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's, and I do apologize, I don't have that specific, but there are different sections and I'm not sure how many kennels are in each section. I do know that there are five sections.
Oh, okay, that, okay.
Together, that has several kennels within that section.
Okay, because if it was per kennel, I was going to say... Okay, because if it was per kennel, I was going to say, that's pretty excessive.
And Ms. Ogletree, I'm sorry.
Does it have to be a particular type of material for?
Yes.
They are, what they have recommended, so that's what the quote that we had gotten was on what the Department of Agriculture was recommending.
Do you know what that material is?
I don't.
We don't find out for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that information, we'll definitely be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, because it'd be worthwhile, because if it's a specialty company, you might even check with a local source to see if they have availability, because I...
Well, that's what we would prefer, is our preference is always to use local.
Right.
You know, that's who supports Noah's Ark or our local community, and that's what we want to be able to do is to support the local businesses as well.
Any additional comment?
No, I was just going to say, you can get whatever requirements for the overhangs.
Yeah, we'll get all the information, whatever will be helpful, we'll be happy with it.
And make sure, because last thing we want to do is build something that's not forming with what the state wants.
Yeah, I mean, you want something that's going to last a while, because if you put something up, like you said, you try some type of cover and it just didn't work.
Yeah, pro now.
It lasts a while.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Chief Baturak is here for item number one.
Okay, can I come forward, Chief? We skipped over, because no one is here, but can you give us some information on that item number one, which is address display on properties, and it does make sense of what we're going to talk about.
Right, and when you appointed me as chief, I sent out a flyer in that first quarter of 2022 in all of the utility bills, trying to get people to address their homes and everything like that. And then Audrey, I know just recently, was trying to update this ordinance, and she asked me for some verbiage, and I put "commercial property." My biggest issue with my biggest life safety is apartment buildings, and on the end, like the 600 block of Gauding, they have multiple apartments in there, and our guys are forever struggling to find out addresses. So if I can get those addresses on the curb with a sign, it would speed up our response time in those apartments. And I think she added that to your ordinance, I haven't been able to look at that ordinance, but I think that verbiage was plenty there, yes.
Yeah, we need to make sure it's specific to apartment complexes as well as residence.
Is it in there?
It's in there.
Okay, so it's in there. So yeah, if people can have big enough addresses where we can see them from the streets, it's for their benefit.
The other thing, and, but I think another thing that would be good is, the addresses are fine, but, you know, at nighttime, if they're not lit, illuminated.
Did she put something there on that illumination?
Contrast colors.
Yeah. It did, yeah.
Something that's illuminated.
Yeah, the two inches.
Has a size on it.
And a color, they contrast with, yep, that's perfect. I think we'll be fine. And then the buildings that are set back, scripture requires, will you? Yep. Yeah, that's perfect.
How much will you weigh, are you giving, 50 feet?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if it's 51, I'm not going to, at least I could see something.
Right. Other questions on this ordinance? Go ahead, Ms. Ogletree.
I wondered if it might be better to say, rather than that contrast with the color of the building, to say something like the contrast with the color of the background, just to be clear, because buildings can be all different colors, parts of the building can be one color, so you really, I think the point is that you need to be able to see the number in front of whatever background it's on.
That's a good one. Okay.
And I think it wouldn't be, I mean, maybe not force people to do it, but maybe even if you would just recommend in that ordinance that they get illuminated as well, because it would benefit you guys.
Right, no, I agree.
So on new construction?
New construction, it's mandatory.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already built into the code.
Because, you know, the cost of solar lighting right now, if you buy one that'll illuminate for pretty cheap.
Right. And reflective material, too, they sell the numbers in reflective material.
Okay, other questions?
I'm in violation.
We got to break that.
I got to finger it up, Chief.
So what is the protocol if a house is not numbered for a certain amount of time?
And you call for an emergency, that's on you, not on us, for the delayed response, right?
Okay, yeah, that's true.
It's nice, but it's not visible.
Right.
Did somebody have it up? Did somebody have their hand up on the audience?
I was agreeing with Karen by health, too.
So there's two people now. Okay, thank you, makes sense. Okay, item four, Chamber of Commerce additional funding request.
Good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate you all taking the time this afternoon, and for those of you who don't know me, I may have often, and want to kind of first give you an idea on why I joined up the Chamber Board at this point in time, why I am where I am, to kind of give you guys an idea of everybody in the side of the room right now, they're in the Board or in the Chamber in this case, and why we're each here, and why we're each on board in this, okay? So, background, we moved here in '91, my mom had started the Edward Jones office here in Trinidad, which is where she had actually gotten involved with the Chamber, and she was the Chamber President back in the early '90s as well. And it was something that was paramount to the building for her business over the years, and I understand that things change, times change, as well as different facilities, but when we look back at what it did for her business, that's one of the reasons why I'm here. But not only that, number two, I moved out of Trinidad in college because I didn't see the value, I guess you could say, of our community. In other words, a small-town kid wants to have big city life, went out, realized that it's not the case, so came back, and now I'm confronted with something that I never really considered, and that's the fact that I have three kids right now. Toby's 12, Eli's 11, and Yogi's coming up on four to five. And as a parent, I want more than anything to be able to see all three of my kids thrive, human here in our community. And if we look at, unfortunately, my generation, a good percentage of them, a good portion of who I went to school with, they're not here, they're gone. So to give you an idea of why I'm here with the Chamber and trying to petition for our sake is somewhat selfish, in the case for my kids, for my family, but in the case that that does go back to very much benefit each and every one of us as members of this great town, okay? So, as I mentioned, we've got Kayla here in the front, Torres, Claudia Henning, Jared Peters, Mary Pacino's joining us, we've got Marky Davis, and then back we've got Eaton. So we're here again to represent and to show what we want to be able to put forth as a Chamber of Commerce to you guys for the rest of the year, and really continuing forward, hopefully long into the future. We are a very dynamic group, we all work together, we work very hard, we, anybody who's on the Board in this case is not just by name, you know, that is something we've seen a lot in the past here, is, hey, we have so-and-so on the Board, it's just a name, they're not present, they're not there, they're not working. We are a very dedicated working Board. Currently, we've got both Jerry and Kayla as basically co-leaders in this case. We felt it well, rather than immediately appointing another president, it's working very well for us, we're working together as more of a balance versus one head in this case, so that's definitely different, but it's something that's working and working well for us. So when we look at, hopefully, did each one of you guys get this ahead of time for our business plan for basically the year? So as you can see, we're really at a point that we need help going forward, we really do. We did some searching throughout, if you Google cities between our population range, there's about 10 of them throughout Colorado, there's one of them that has an active and thriving Chamber, and that's going to be out by Grand Junction. It was, I think it was, was it Redland?
Redland.
Redland, so it's Redland. Now, what's different with them is they do receive the tax dollars from tourism, so they have that ability to be able to continue going, continue to have that income stream as they go forward. So we had come to a solution, I've been on the Board now for roughly six months, we came to a solution of how can we go ahead and become a Chamber that is giving back, a Chamber that's being able to go forward over the long term, and that was going to be by membership. We had figured that we need something sustainable, we knew how many, approximately how many businesses were licensed in the area, so we figured, hey, if we can go ahead and get somewhere around a third of those businesses that currently have licenses, we can basically get enough revenue as a Chamber to survive. And we worked very hard over the last six months to increase membership, which we did, but at the same rate of adding people, unfortunately, we had attrition as well. So through their hard work, especially Amy Rosetti, we could not do it without having our Executive Director. We ended up adding about 40, 44, I believe it was, new members, but at the same time, we had the exact same amount of people end up leaving. Now, one solution that we did come up with, that we did enact, is one of our hardest or our biggest challenges was, you get somebody signed up, just like Amazon, any type of membership, do they bill you every single month? No, they set something up automatic reoccurring, it's one of those things that continues to happen. We hadn't set anything up like that previously, so it was always trying to reach back out to the business and basically get a recommitment every single year. And if they're having a bad week, a bad month, or just a bad day, sometimes it's, no, we're not, we're not at the point that we can do that. So that really made it difficult as well as, as we know, coming forward in 2022. So we have a lot of exciting things that we want to do. Challenges, we have to balance between actual events that are going to benefit our economy, benefit our businesses, but then at the same time, we're trying to balance between surviving. So rather than being able to strictly focus on what can we provide for our businesses and how can we help our businesses, at the same time, we're trying to think, well, how can we fundraise to be able to preserve ourselves also? We've been here for nearly 150 years now as a Chamber of Commerce, and I think it's something that can be, continue to be valuable going forward tremendously. And as things keep changing with our city, you know, there, from my understanding, the Labor Day Parade, potentially, we're not going to be having, as well as the roundup, I think the burrs were getting close to winding things down, I don't know if that's, again, from our understanding. And as we see some of these things changing, and people stepping back from the positions that they were in, we would really like to be somebody who can continue to step up to fill these roles, to be able to, again, continue to give back to the community that has so much given back to each of us. But realistically, we can the position that we're in. Most of us have full-time jobs, most of us have careers, most of us have families, and being able to have somebody to answer the phones on a day-to-day basis is paramount, otherwise we, again, we're not an active Chamber in that case. And having the workforce and labor to be able to put on some of these events that we want to, incentivize Trail Days is, as we know, one of those staple items for Trinidad, and it's something that we want to be able to continue to do. But realistically, we're in a situation that if we look at the future, we have a business plan right now that shows cutting our Executive Director down to halftime, basically. That'll get us to the point that we basically break even for the year. If we have the city continue to do their membership, we continue to have the membership that we do, not have attrition, keep things as-is, we will be at the point of just making, basically at the end of the year, what we have in the bank today. But again, that's assuming we keep going as-is, which we've had a full-time Executive Director to do that for us. So we're really at the stage of petitioning for the city that we would like love partnership or help on your guys' end. Unfortunately, it's always money, as we know that, but we want to show ourselves as a Chamber who's willing to do whatever it takes to give the businesses what they deserve, to be able to grow, thrive, and survive in our community. And realistically, we can't do that without funding and support from you guys.
Questions?
Andrew, do you think there'll be more stability in the existing Board as opposed to maybe the high turnaround you had in the past?
It's a good question. I feel that there is. I've been asked many times to be on the Board in the past, and I always declined in the case of many different personal reasons, but in the case like my own, A, I'm here to stay as well as I know a few others definitely are committed, Eaton's been here for a good time now, and again, with the commitment that we each have, I think we're looking at a different scenario. I hope and I pray so.
So it's better by not having maybe a Board President?
It seems to alleviate a lot of some of the tensions in some of the schoolroom fighting.
I know where you're coming from. Other questions?
I feel your pain, there is nothing harder to do than to try and operate a nonprofit, especially post-COVID.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this, your finances here, Andrew, so the 14,890, I'm trying to figure out what your finances were last year, because your expenses, you show 27,000 plus for operating and 45,000 plus for payroll, so you have operating of total expenses of about 72, almost 73,000.
Correct.
So your income, see, I'm trying to figure this out, you show your net income at 29,758. What does that include?
That says a negative.
Oh, I didn't see the negative.
Yeah, so that's in red, so you're saying next door bank balance, correct?
Yeah, it doesn't show.
Okay, yeah, so if you look at mine...
That's what I was looking at, too.
Okay, that makes sense. I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, that's a negative number, so unfortunately, it didn't come across on yours.
Okay, got it. It didn't show up, ours doesn't include in color. I guess we have to put our heads together and see what we could do to help you. I will mention that tourism tax is governed by ordinance, and we can't do anything with that many. There's so many regulations and requirements, how that many is spent on what?
Yeah.
Do you guys have, do you have something specific you want the city to do?
So in this case right now, to be able to retain Amy's hopefully full-time, because again, we have her marked down, it's going to part-time, and we don't, again, knowing employment and being able to survive off of part-time, there's a very good chance we even lose our Executive Director. So at the point that if we want to make it through the year and be able to retain her, we need approximately an injection of about $20,000 to be able to continue paying her salary through the end of the year, and hopefully get on a point that we're, again, making forward motion and forward progress rather than the backwards that we've been seeing.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
What type of events do you have lined up this year?
So this year, we've got a few different ones that are set up. We've got Santa Fe Trail Days, we've got a business expo, we do our coffee talks. Now, when I say business expo, it's something that we're looking to do a little bit different. We're mixing together, I don't know if you guys have ever done like a taste of, you know, a different place, right? So we're doing a combination of both restaurants and businesses, and hoping to do that either at the park or fairgrounds where we can go ahead and get both businesses... at the park or fairgrounds where we can go ahead and get both businesses, the restaurants to come together and hopefully get a lot of the community. No admission on it, we're just doing there to try and get more people in the community to realize what businesses are here in existence. To be able to hopefully continue to make through, we're charging small booth space expenses, $25 for members, $50 for non-members. So we're still trying to make it something affordable. But then also where local businesses can come, the restaurants can sell gift certificates to their place and have food samplings. Places that do arts and crafts, they can bring some of their stuff, advertise what they have. Like I said, Santa Fe Trail Days, which we all very well aware of that, we've got our business showcase luncheons that we do on a year-to-year basis, excuse me, month-to-month basis. Let's see here, because this is something we've been coming over a lot and talking through. A lot of it has to do with what we're able to take on at this point. If we are able to take on more based off of help, we do so.
What does that look like in far as generate projections we've all sent down after your events?
So after the events, that's where we're really at our break even. So right now, we're looking at a balance of about $15,000 in the bank currently today that at the end of the year, we're sitting at about the exact same. But that is with bringing our executive director back down to part-time and assuming that we do retain her. So again, we're not trying to do it as a, we need to survive as a business, right? Business model, but we're not trying to do these events as an income generating. And all of the figures that we're looking at, that we put forward in front of you guys, these are our conservative estimates. Because we would, again, plan, prefer to plan for worst-case scenario with the incomes versus plan on something best case and come back to you guys next year saying, didn't work, we didn't do what we promised we would.
Mr. Rooker? You know, looking at their problems here, we got that creative arts building there. Is there a way we can give them an office space in here so they wouldn't have to pay the $1,000 a month? Would make a big, big difference on that. And that would, you know, we got that building, we might as well use it. And it's important, the Chamber of Commerce could be really good. And I could see that the people out there, and I'm not saying they're, the other groups, but seems to me that they're more involved and they want to do things for Trinidad. And I think it would be important for us to help them out as much as we can. And we do have that building, we have the space down there. I think that would be a good idea to work on that. And also, we also have a bunch of boards that we need to look at, which we are, to see what we need to combine some of these together that we just don't need and put money into, you know, some places that we could get back for the city. But I think that would be a really good idea to look into, getting them a place to stay and cutting that rent off, even if, you know, we have the building, we have to heat it, we have to do that. And we have the space and this would be a good opportunity for us to do something for the community.
Yeah, something like that would be highly beneficial.
And it's also downtown, it's also in a good area there that people could come in and out and put a nice sign there. And get people into our buildings too, in the downtown area.
Is there space?
Mayor and Councilmember, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Certainly something we can look into. We do have office space in that building. There would be some concerns that were already experienced in there with building access and that type of thing, but it's certainly something we can look into, talk with Wally and see if there's some feasibility in providing that as an option.
Do you have a lease?
Do you guys know where we're at with that? And does that not, lease, doesn't that lease actually?
The lease is a five-year lease that we're just over a year into. So we have to get the leasing company to let us out.
Potentially something we can talk to, the building on there as well.
Questions?
I do. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Aaron.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Thank you, thank you. Certainly, the city has all sorts of interests and seem to it that our district's community is well-served and supported. But I do want to know, I didn't see anything in your business plan that you provided to us, what evidence it is of how these events actually benefit our businesses? Do you have any kind of measurement that you do with regard to, you know, after we do the Santa Fe Trail Days, the businesses have this much more foot traffic? Or after we do these coffee talks or whatever it is, I think I really do want to see that what you're doing is increasing traffic to the businesses as well as to their websites. I think that would motivate me personally more to get behind what you're doing. I see a lot of activities, but I'm not sure I'm seeing how that ultimately moves the ball.
Reaps a reward, correct?
I'm sorry?
That's making sure it's reaping a reward.
Name it. I do have several questions here written down. You know, as we know, is that for any organization to thrive, you need to have your leadership in place that's going to create a positive atmosphere.
Correct.
And that is, the Chamber is a primary organization in the city of Trinidad, otherwise it would not have been here for the 140 years that it's been here.
Sure.
So over the last couple of years, we've seen a lot of issues. That's why we questioned it last year as to work direction you guys were going in. There's been a change here. We've seen that change, and it seems like it's more positive now than it has been. And so it needs to be as any organization that's out there, even our own organizations have to have reasonable, you know, leadership, but also need to be apolitical so that you don't get into a rut with that situation, because that could kill you, that could kill your organization immediately.
Yep.
So you need to be careful with that. So a couple of other, the other things I've got here is, this is where I think you can find some additional funding. I think you need to go to the county, because right now, the county's only going to give you like $2,500. We're giving you 10.
Sure.
That's what we're giving you. Los Angeles County has allocated $120,000 this year for nonprofit organizations. I think that they should and they could actually step up to the plate and they'll give them for you guys.
Absolutely, and we are going to be.
So I think it'd be good if you approach them and give them, because they're the ones that are going to benefit. You were talking about the Labor Day issue. I brought that up last year with whoever was running it. And, you know, years ago, the carnival was there.
Yeah.
It was all at the same time, things drifted away, things pulled apart. And I asked, why isn't there no carnival here anymore? And they said, well, they had been told that because the state fair had their foot in the door, that they were not allowing other communities to have fairs at the same time. So I just happened to be invited to the state fair, and I met the state fair president up there, and I asked her about that, and I said, that is not true. Anybody, because there's other communities in the state that have fairs. So that door is open.
Yeah.
So I think you guys just need to get in there, and if that's something that you want to do, because that drives businesses. And it did drive a lot of businesses, you know, a lot of businesses, but a lot of other businesses, but as well as people in the county to come into town, which would help resources.
Absolutely.
And funding. So that was something that, you know, you guys may be going to look into. Developing membership is your key and one of your major key items. And you pick up 40, you lose 40 through attrition. Have you gone out and checked with the people that you have lost, why they left?
Yes.
Have you done like, you know?
If I can speak to that, Mayor, yes, we have.
What are the primary reasons that you're hearing why they left?
Because the Chamber in the past has not proven themselves to provide a benefit.
Okay.
And so with the economy being the way it is, the very first thing they drop is something that doesn't give them back any value. We have worked very hard in the last six months to change that. And I think our shop, small shop local program proved that. I mean, we did not make any money, the Chamber didn't. But we didn't lose any money. And I think that was a plus. But what we brought on, if you remember my presentation, mark to you, we brought on over 60 participating businesses into the shop local program. A lot to do with the advertising. I look at Eli because we're over at KCRT on a weekly basis, talking about the program. I think that now they're starting to see value. We are putting on new members, new businesses, or been in the area for a year or two, and now are saying, hmm, the Chamber. So it's slow, it's very slow to have this movement forward, but we are making progress. But it's going to take the rest of this year to prove ourselves. Like the Santa Fe Trail Days, we were not a robust event for '22, and we'll be the first to admit it. But this year, I've talked to Rotary, American Legion, Kiwanis, and all these other organizations, as many as I can find, to bring in in order to make it a big event for the town. And we're looking forward to that being this year. So are we bringing value to this community? Yes, just we need this year to prove it.
Okay, here's something else, and I think I've asked this before, is businesses, and even individuals are going to join, but businesses primarily in Los Angeles County.
Yes.
Get the numbers, see what they are. If there's 300 businesses.
There's over 800.
Right, there's over 800. So you have a potential of, let's say, even 50%. Currently, how many members do you have?
Oh, it sucks, we have a little over 100.
There you go. So you have a target that you can try to target.
We want 300.
So what you want to do, the one thing that you want to do is those people that you've lost to attrition, I'm not sure what your membership is for small business. But in order to gain them back, one of the things that you might go to them and say, okay, let's say it costs them $100 a year to participate, we gave $200, want to bring you back, we're going to cut that in half for you to prove to you that, to try to prove to you that we are willing to, want to try to work with you and try to make the Chamber work for you as a business. Offer them something as, you know, give them a carrot out there. And maybe, you know, maybe this second year, they will want to stay on. So I think that's something you may want to consider.
Definitely. And Mayor, it's things we're really trying to work towards doing, but unfortunately, with, really comes down to manpower again, with what we can actually accomplish doing with the workforce we have. Now, the fact that we have a bigger board and we have a more active board, it is making things more available to us. But we're on a path right now, like I said, we're at that kind of turning point where it's saying, well, do we want to survive through the end of the year? Even if we increase membership, even if we do some of those things, it takes time to actually see those results. So unfortunately, kind of what we're discussing here doesn't give us a solve for current. And we're trying to prove to you guys why I kind of started putting my name out on the line in saying, why I'm the one presenting here, because I'm the one that really, not the only one, sorry, guys, but we really want to see this become and be successful.
One of the things that I'm seeing is that you're actually at a, almost like a starting point is really where you're at.
Yes.
And it's going to take time to build that capacity.
Correct.
It really is, so if you can just, like I said, just survive through the year with, like you said, it looks like you might be able, if you can continue with the membership that you have, with the funding that you're getting, at least it provides your basis for the following year. Now, I will tell you this, is that, you know, our allocation that we talked about, you know, our budget is pretty tight, as you well know. And that's why I mentioned that I think if you can encourage the county to come on in addition. But one other thing that will help you, if you can get out of your lease that you have, like Frank mentioned, I'm not sure if we want to necessarily give you, you know, the place free and clear, but if we can, let's say, cut it down to half, because it would be, it would not be fair to other organizations that maybe we want, that want to come in there too. But let's say, because let's say if it's costing you $1,000 a month, that's $12,000 bucks a year. So let's say we can get you in there for, let's say, $5,000 or $6,000. That's where our additional benefit back to you would be.
For sure.
So that would be a tremendous help to you. So, you know, the, we are going to be discussion, discussing things in our retreat coming at the end of next month about combining, like you were talking about, combining other organizations. And we're going to be discussing other things that might be a benefit down the road, but it goes to a board approval down the road that we'll be talking about. But I just wanted to give you guys those particular items I thought that might help you. It doesn't help you like immediately.
Sure.
But it could be a basis to build on.
We appreciate it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is your relationship to the cannabis community and the estate REIT owners?
We have several members that are, maybe have participated in our shop local program by even giving us giveaways for the program. So we have a good relationship with those that are our members.
Anything as far as doing events or something we'll have?
They are very welcome, putting it not correctly. Every time that we have asked, they have contributed to the events that we have.
So it really boils down to, you know, the benefit for the membership that you have.
Correct.
To retain and gain, because word of mouth will travel a little long way.
Yeah, I might make a suggestion. You might talk to, I'm not sure exactly who, in Racton, their Chamber or their.
They do not have one, they have what's called Racton Ambassadors.
Okay, every year, they have a carnival, festival for fundraising, and it really turns out really well for them. They put it on at the school parking lot, and they really get a lot of people. They have it for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You might be able to talk to them, and maybe if that carnival's in this area or something, that might be a really good fundraising deal for you guys to look at, because they'll be there.
You know, you used to bring that here in town at a different time, not at the Labor Day. Here it was Tom Davis. Tom Davis?
Yeah.
You might talk to him, because he has some connection with some carnivals that he brought in a few years back, and I'm not sure why he quit. But even if it was at a different time of the year, big deal, but maybe we could have it a couple of times a year.
We've done carnivals, and my husband and I have been involved with another Chamber, and we did carnivals, and yes, they do raise funds. But they require a lot of work and a lot of volunteer and a lot of organization. So it's a, putting it on the list is another event to do. And we've got as much as we can handle with what we have.
Okay, like I said, you know, Tom Davis, he did this in the past. Why don't you talk to him? Maybe by him helping you, maybe you can get a cut of the pie.
A little collaboration.
And he, you know, he may be able to, you know, put it all together for you guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that suggestion.
So that was a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, Keith, any other questions? Just keep working hard for Trinidad.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time.
Okay, on item five, kiosk wrapping, that is something that has been brought up by the Tourism Board. They have a couple of electronic kiosks that are going into place in downtown. And I guess there is a wrap that can go around the kiosk, and they're asking if maybe the city would want to sponsor the wraps on them. And I can't remember exactly what the cost for those would be. I've got some pictures of what, actually, they're from Soufa, and they are a solar-powered turnkey. And what they'll do is if you want to pass those around, this is what they look like. And what they'll be able to do is do actually do advertisement, businesses can advertise, but the overall wrap could be something that they're asking that the city would want to do. I mentioned to them last week when we had that discussion during the meeting, that maybe it would be better to try to get maybe one of the larger businesses or companies, industries to maybe if they want to advertise the wrap themselves, but I'm not sure what you guys think.
Where exactly would these be placed at?
One is going on Commercial Street, and the other one is going at the Miners Memorial Park. Those two are his. They want to be right next to you, one of them, in that area.
I want to find myself.
Put your name on it, do some advertising.
But you know what, that's kind of counterproductive for the city to advertise. Why don't, I mean, so the Tourism Board is putting these, it would be more beneficial to have.
It would be more beneficial to have the businesses that are going to generate the revenue advertise on these.
That's why I bring it up, I thought, you know, if we get one of the industries or one of the larger businesses to want to do the wrap.
Because in actuality, we are sponsoring it because the city's waiting for them.
I agree. What are your thoughts? Frank, any thoughts?
No. Just advertise, you brought it up.
Erin, do you have any questions on that?
I think to some extent, those kiosks should reflect that they are City of Trinidad-sponsored. I, you know, that should be clear somehow on them. I can't see the pictures that you're passing around, but I think the City of Trinidad should be featured somehow on there.
Okay. Neiman?
Like Erin said, to definitely tie it to the tourism and travel situation and with the Chamber, that would be great if it could serve more than...
Yeah, but I, like I said, I'm of the same opinion that I think that, you know, maybe a local business sponsored the wrap on it would be more beneficial, yeah.
Some of those pictures you showed us, it had several...
There are other areas in between, like in your work, a business could buy, you know, get a spot. And these can be, I'm not sure, I can't remember how it's done. I'm not sure Mr. Ruhler knows, but they can change. Some of the activities are going on, let's say the Chamber is going to have any particular event, events could be sponsored on these, and they can be changed, I think, electronically. So that's part of the reason for these kiosks in there. In their sense, they're solar-powered. So they're actually thinking of being, getting these installed, I think, sometime in March, so that they'll be in place for the tourism season.
Are these interactive, do they do audio and...
I don't think it's, I think it's just visual. So Mr. Ruhler, do you want to give that back to Marty or...
Mr. Mayor, yes, I'll give that back to Marty, and we'll bring any concerns that precipitate out of that approach to you all.
I think they just wanted to give the council an opportunity if we wanted to do some of their songs.
Exactly, yeah. So I'll give that back to Marty.
Leslie, you want to put your name on that?
Sure. That'll ensure defects in the kiosk.
Okay, any other items for future work sessions that come, who wants to bring up?
I don't think we have enough coming with our retreat.
With our retreat coming up, we've got pretty good. Mr. Ruhler and I have sat down and we've gone over a list of items.
We'll bring those up, I can sort this kind of status quo as soon as we can.
Just for, I think the newspapers here. Mr. Dell, is that if you can put in the newspaper that my city, the State of the City address is next Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the Pioneer Room. And if you would, up until a few days before, make sure that they put it on that sidebar. So that people can see, appreciate that. I think this is an opportunity for the, we don't have the time to go over every aspect of what we've done this last year, but we'll give you some good highlights, highs and lows. And it's a good opportunity for the city to find out what we've accomplished, what maybe... Thursday, is that the night?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday night, okay.
It's Tuesday, we have issues. Just hearing, I heard.
It's Thursday, so yeah. So it's a good opportunity for the community to come out, and we'll, Mr. Murphy will be putting that on YouTube and on chat. All right, thank you for being here and for doing what...
Thank you.